Thank you. But as far as I know, well, Kim indicated Shelby's on his way, he's just a few minutes away. Linda, as far as I know, was coming, so I think she'll be here as well, but something obviously delayed her, so. I had asked Dr. Croll to provide some information on the Campus Life Fund. In particular, what, how much of that, what does that money use for? How much do we need? What, if anything, is there a surplus that might be usable for other, for other directions? And that's, I'll just turn it over to.
I'll turn it over again.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's easy.
Okay, thank you. Also, if you're talking about what the Campus Life Funds are used for, Bill may want to hop in on that, too. He, he's a key administrator there, but I've given you just a little bit of information here, kind of background information. The top box just shows where our unencumbered cash is for that system. We call that a, a system of four funds. The bookstore, the student union fund, the food service fund, and the residence hall fund. So there are four separate distinct funds. And the expenditures, the revenues are there to support those four funds and the associated expenditures, which are really just operating expenditures, like in the student union fund. The utilities, the custodial, the maintenance of the building comes from that. And I think the residence hall and the food service are probably pretty self-explanatory. And obviously, the bookstore. Those, those expenditures go for buying books or contracts with providers of eBooks that, which we, our students use, and for maintaining the facility. And.
Kent, is food service on here?
Food service. The, the figures that you see here are combined, like on the top, the, those balances.
Yes.
That's the unencumbered cash balance for the four funds combined.
I get it, thank you.
Food service is pretty much a break even fund. We just generally set the fees to come, the fees that the students pay for their meals to offset the costs of the meals. The residence hall, you know, those, those charges have to pay for a few salaries, the custodials. We have one full-time employee at the residence hall, it's one. There's a RA stipend, so there's a number of different things. Yeah. So the second section, that's strictly from the bookstore, just the gross profit. And I thought that would be of interest and something that we've looked at. And you can see that, how that's declined. That's, that's due to a couple of reasons, I believe. Obviously, the enrollment decrease cuts into our gross profit because we're having less sales. But also, the OERs and online books, while, while we do charge fees for those, much of that has been as a benefit for the student to reduce the cost of books for the students. Obviously, if we're reducing that cost for the student, we don't have quite as many, quite as much profit. And so you can see that that has gone down. But at the same time, we've been able to maintain the overall cash balance. We did, I believe, in, for fiscal year 21, we added a dollar to the student union fee that all students pay. And so we have to kind of monitor that as we go to see if, if that fee is enough to, to help offset costs. And then the bottom section, we put on there, because this is one of the main reasons that we believe it's, it's good to keep a balance in this system of funds, because we take care of these buildings from this, this particular set of funds, from the revenue that comes to these funds. And you can see there that we have some old buildings there. In particular, the West Building from 1965 is probably going to become an issue at some point in time. The union was built in 65, too, but we've done a total renovation of that a couple of times. So that's all kind of background information. I guess I would open it up to your conversation, or Bill, if you want to copy in a little bit.
The only other thing I would offer on West is it's not renovatable.
Oh, it's not?
No, because if we would do a major renovation of West, it would have to become ADA accessible. And right now, it's not. It would take, because of its design, it would take two elevators to make all four floors accessible. And so it's just, it's not something that we can renovate.
Is West the one that's closest to the old Edgicare Building?
Yes.
And there's no elevator?
There, it'll hold, it'll, 103 beds is what West holds.
Yeah, I might just say those, those index descriptors, good, obsolete, poor, fair, that came from our campus master plan that was done by Gravity Works Architects, and, and they had some partners in creating that campus master plan. And they did a deferred maintenance study of all the buildings on the campus. And if you want to go into that in any greater depth, I'd have Ireland talk about it, but that's just a little background there.
Right now, we use West Hall for men only. It's the least expensive of the units that we, we put on the, on, for board, for room and board for our students. You know, it depends on the individual. I've, I've seen parents come into West. Depending on the student, I've seen parents come into West and talk to their son about, you've got a bed, you've got internet, you've got a bathroom right down the hall. Everything you need is right here. And then others, it's not big enough. They don't like the community bathroom and that kind of thing. It depends on the student.
How many beds in East Hall?
I don't know that one off the top of my head. I, I think it's around 120, 125, I believe. Cummins has 130, and the apartments are 32, eight per apartment, and there's four of those.
There's some real technology challenges in West as well.
Yeah, but, yeah.
It's a cement block building.
Yes.
You say eight apartments, is that in Cummins Hall, or is that something different?
The apartments are, are eight plexes. They're four different buildings that are just to the, to the south and a little bit of west of, of West Hall.
So are they not listed on here?
No, I, I didn't list those on there, probably should have.
And what's the occupancy of all of these? When you say West Hall?
377 total beds is what we have.
Right, but what, how many students, or how many are fully, are they fully occupied at this point?
Yeah. Spring semester's a little less, but we start with a waiting list every fall.
So those apartments, you're not talking about the ones across the street?
No, that's the Villas. That's, that's not owned by the college at all.
So the ones you're talking about are the ones that are closest to?
They're closest to the student union on the west side of the campus, yes.
Okay.
And Wes, if we, if we, well, we've talked about it, because one of the things that we've talked about is, well, you know, we're going to have to update at some point in time. And if we, if we, West would be the one that we would choose to change, because it's not handicap accessible and, you know, just difficult. And so we would essentially, we wouldn't have enough time to knock down West and rebuild in a three-month timeframe, you know, to be ready for occupancy. So probably what we would have to do would be to not use the apartments, because they're the least occupied, they have the least occupancy space. But to, you know, build a different residence hall in that, in that footprint where those apartments are. And once it's built, then we could, you know, knock down West, and we might even be able to do some, you know, some renovation to the other two residence halls to update them. Still, have the same occupancy level or. Yeah, at some point in time, West is going to have to come down, yeah, do something different.
I have a question for whoever can answer this. I, I kind of like to know, I'm like, I'd just like to listen to the inclusive of all of the buildings that are included in the Campus Life Fund.
Except for the apartments, yes.
The apartments are known as the apartments.
The apartments, they're the, the.
We used to call them the eight.
We used to call them, yeah. We used to call them the eight plexes, but basically, they're apartments. They hold eight, and right now, the apartments are all female. They hold, they have eight beds. They have two bathrooms and a kitchen and a, and a common living space.
Okay, so this is all-inclusive residential buildings, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And West, West Hall, it looks like needs a lot of maintenance.
It's the oldest.
So I guess I'm wondering, what is the future plan for that?
We just talked about that. At some point in time, we're going to have to replace that building, probably.
Is that on your capital plan somewhere?
It's not on the deferred maintenance list right now, because we're addressing HVAC stuff really right now, so.
Was it in the, was it in the capital outlay?
No, the capital outlay mill levy was only for those technology projects. It was focused on the technology projects, not on.
Is there a waiting list to get into the dorms every year? And like, how many are on the list?
It depends.
Did you fill another dorm?
No, not right now. When, when the Villas, when the Villas were built, we were running about 150 to 200 people on a waiting list. We even went downtown. We talked to the Chamber of Commerce. We talked to hotel owners to see if they would be willing to give us a good rate to open those up to students. We didn't find anything. So then we looked, we took bids from private contractors, and that's where the, the Villas came into being. We guaranteed them beds. We guaranteed them an occupancy rate for the first four years of 92% occupancy rate for the first two years, 90% occupancy for the second two years. And then after that, our guaranteed occupancy went away.
And how many beds in the Villas?
192.
And they are not full?
Right now, they're not. They're about 50%.
They aren't our building.
They aren't, we do not own the Villas. We don't have anything, I mean, we don't operate them, we don't have any liabilities with them. They're right across here, just south of the football field.
If there's 192 beds there, and they're 50% occupied, then you, and you close down West Hall, wouldn't that kind of almost be a wash? You know, because their prices are much higher than what we charge on campus.
Yeah, and if we close down West.
How much higher, I mean, because I would think it might be easier to subsidize some of those kids going there than it would be to build a $9 million dorm.
Well, the problem, the problem becomes our ability to manage, you know, student code of conduct and manage things for we, when they're living in a private residence. Residence as opposed to living on campus.
So if they live there now, and the college just supplemented or gave money to the owners of the building so that they could give a lesser rate to the students, but not have the liability of the students, would there be any way to do something like that? I mean, you got, you guaranteed occupancy at one point and helped initiate getting it built.
Yeah, we did that with.
An investor might be really annoyed seeing a brand-new dorm going across the street when I got 50%.
Well, that's why we can't build a new dorm for, our agreement with the Villas is that we would not do any major renovation to our residence halls or at a residence hall for 10 years. That hasn't expired yet. We're getting close. I think they've got a, I think we've got another year left. There are some parents that want their kids on campus, period. They don't want them, even across the street, they don't want them there because of the safety and security issues over there, and the safety and security issues, uh, safety and security support that we have here. There are some parents that say, if you can't live on campus, we're not coming to Butler.
Well, another option would be, it might be cheaper just to buy those structures from the owners and provide some security over there. They would probably sell them to you. They're cheap, they're only 50% occupied.
Hey now.
And I know a guy.
We know a guy.
Little college students.
Just trying to brainstorm ideas that don't cost $8 million.
Well, and, you know, and that's a little bit longer term, a little bit longer term, but the Villas are owned, the, the company that owns the Villas now own residence halls or residential living, residential living on all kinds of college campuses.
What kind of a waiting list do we have?
Like I said, it depends from.
Around numbers, like 50, 100?
Typically, it's around 50 to 100. It depends from one year to the next, but it's typically been at least 50.
15%, and then weed out who really needs to be there, who's willing to pay for it, and then the rest of them can go to the.
The Villas are higher, quite a bit higher, and their contract is, their contract is longer term for the students. And so it doesn't give, it used to not give the students as much flexibility for them to be here only a semester or to be here only, you know, nine months out of the year. They would have to pay a 12-month contract, even though they work here in the summer, and I don't think they can sublease there.
I don't think they can sublease either.
I'm not excited about building any authentication.
I just, I want you to talk to, just to keep on track. The reason I asked for this was because there's this $4.4 million Campus Life Fund, and I was trying to get a feel for what that money was earmarked for. This wasn't meant to talk about the future of residence hall living on campus.
Yeah, we don't have to talk about building right now, because we're not even at that.
Okay, no, it's okay, that's okay. I just, Julie, go ahead.
I don't have, I was just going to ask. No, I just was wondering. I had asked we have right now in college as far as the rentals, the MOUs, all the lease purchases.
We're working on it. You should have it here and the next day or two. My, I rely a lot on my administrative assistant for that, and she's been gone for four days.
Do you know about work from home? Well.
Yeah, it's, it shouldn't be a problem. You, you said you'd like it before we voted it, so I didn't think it was a great hurry.
No, it's, it's okay, but, you know, certainly before we start thinking about.
I would say a couple of days from now, you should have it.
I can tell you, we have not discussed the idea of building another residence hall, probably in, well, we haven't talked about actually building another residence hall since we were having the 150 to 200 people on a waiting list, and we got the Villas. I mean, that really took care of all of our residence hall needs at that point in time. West is old. I mean, there's nothing we can do about West being old. There's nothing we can do about the community bathrooms and that kind of thing. They are still livable, students still live them, students still choose to live in West. So right now, we're okay.
Is it central air or window air?
They've got individual units in each of the rooms.
What's, does anybody know the research on what's going to happen in the future with community colleges and people living in dorms? Are we going to see an increase or a decrease? Are we going to see more, more students just driving into the campus?
If I knew the answer to that question, I could become a consultant and live in the lifestyle in which I would like to become a customer. I don't know.
It's going to depend, it's going to depend on the college and the campus. I don't think that there's a, that there's a sort of blanket answer to that. Students are going to continue to use and access more and more technology. You know, I think that there's a, a thought that physical footprints will change, you know, than, than what they used to be, but it's hard to say. There, you know, there's, as long as the fine arts events, the student organizations, and athletics are based off of this campus, there's going to be a need for residential living, because those students are not typically students that commute back and forth because of the commitment, of the, the time commitment of things outside of their regular classes. I, I guess I'm hopeful that there always will be a desire and a need for physical campus and on-campus living, because that's part of a college experience for so many students.
Just one last question, is this in your plan, the dorm, or at some point, or pricing the dorm, or the strategic plan somewhere?
We haven't, I haven't put it in any forecast yet. But to the, to the old dear question, I, I don't see, and I'm combining the two questions, I don't see how. At this time, I don't see any evidence that the number of students who want to live in dorms is going to significantly go down. That could change, but I, I don't see that evidence right now. If, if it changes, I'll certainly share, share with you guys, but.
So you don't think the number of kids want to get out of the house is going to change?
No.
Of the, not counting what we would want to keep in this Campus Life Fund for what we might need down the road, how much do we need annually to pay the bills that, from a cash flow standpoint? What do we need to have in that account to be able to pay, to buy books, to pay the day-to-day expenses that are admittedly, they're refilled as the, as we get monies in? But what do you need to have to pay those bills?
That's one of the reasons I put this cost of books column in here. And you can see that right now, for this year, we're estimating it at $1.5 million. And we would probably need at least half of that on hand during the summer before we sold any books, to buy books. So that's, that's one, one factor. The other factor is, you know, for potential breakdowns of equipment. And you would want to keep a, a fairly significant amount for boilers and things like that. So I, I don't have a definitive answer, but probably for operations, you know, if, if you had a couple million dollars in there at year end.
For operations, or just operations?
Yeah.
I don't know, and I think it's, I guess I feel like it's prudent to keep money in there for, you know, future deferred maintenance, too.
We do have 10.5%.
Well, yeah, that's in different funds. But that really, you're really mixing up the funds, so to, to consider those two things. I would, I would suggest that they really need to be kept separate. That you need to think about how much you need for the Campus Life Funds and look at that balance. And then look at the operating funds where we keep the 10.5%, because we don't typically co-mingle those monies.
Are these, are these funds, Kent, do we have any legal stipulations on how these funds can be spent?
No. We used to, when there were bond covenants that, bond payments that were still outstanding, but we don't have any bond payments. We're debt-free in these funds, so they can really be used for any, any purpose that the board feels appropriate.
Any other questions, anybody on the Campus Life Fund? Deferred Maintenance was one that we, we've talked about that a bunch.
Ireland is prepared to talk about this. We have some handouts that Tom and I will hand out.
What's this for? Oh, this is for, okay. Thank you.
Shelby, do you want some almonds? Whoa. Dave, did you want some almonds?
Almonds, uh, no.
Julie?
Oh, no, I got some, there's some of my. Your what?
Presti Winslow, to answer your question earlier, if I had any of the residence expenses on this deferred maintenance list, no, because that's been in the past, a separate account that has financed its own construction and stuff, so I have not included any dorms or residence cost or anything on this list, so.
Just campus?
Just campus, not dorms, correct. Okay, as y'all see this list, I actually split it up into four different sections. We looked at the projects of what we thought our expenses would be in the next 10 years. And the first section is projects that we feel like we're probably going to have to replace in the next one to three years. And then the second one is three to five, and then five to 10, and so on. The top section there, we have roughly 11 projects I have listed. I don't, I wasn't going to go down the list one by one unless you want me to.
I'm interested in that short, more three-term, year-term critical projects.
Okay.
The first one up here is PG Stadium, H.
Okay.
Is that our, is that Arthur?
Is that what, I'm sorry.
Is that not something that we split with El Dorado and?
Yes, it is. Normally, the entities split that up, but that is correct. This here, 25,000, is for the upgrade of software to control all the heating there in the buildings. What that does is it allow, allow us to, to actually control the buildings off-site. So yes, it saves the labor, especially in the winter. But more than that, it actually is able to send out emails of alerts for any equipment that is failing, freezing, failing. Yes, it will send out an email, phone calls to three or four of my staff, so we'd know there's an issue, or.
Well, okay, so is that the cost of?
25,000 is the total cost for that.
And then we split that with El Dorado and the other, the three entities or not?
Normally, we do.
Normally, what's that mean?
Well, I haven't visited, and they haven't committed to that. This is on my priority list because of the initial, from the freezing and the potential cost. I'd need to, well, I'd like to be able to see that, like all our other buildings on all the campuses, so we can take control of any issues quickly.
Ireland?
Yes.
Question, so this is a new control, because we did have a freeze two years ago, and that's where the damage occurred. So this is going to be something more improved?
That is correct.
Okay.
The, the old system, you know, we could see it's part of it remotely, but couldn't adjust it, couldn't verify anything without going out. That system is outdated, it ran Java, and, uh, which, for those of you who know Java, we don't have a, well, Bill may have an old laptop that'll run it, but we don't have anything that'll run it anymore.
Java doesn't go on.
I just don't want to get too much into weeds here, but on the other hand, I, I hate, I hate to take control of anything as far as that stadium, because it is not, it is not really owned by the students as far as I'm concerned. So everything that it costs should be split through ways. I don't know, I just.
I understand that. From my, from my perception is we're the one that, that actually handle all the heating there. From my, from my perception is we're the one that, that actually handle all the heating airs, we're the ones that maintain it. So it was on the top of my list and that's the only reason it's there.
Okay. Yeah, you might want to let them know.
Well, I have, and there's discussions about it. It's just they don't have the funding at this time, so.
It hasn't been, and it hasn't been officially discussed or approved in order, so.
Does anybody else have any questions on that top section of any of these projects? Or questions about what they involve or anything?
What's it, oh, go ahead.
The 200 building is?
It is the mill room.
Okay.
That building.
And it needs the sewer replaced.
Yes, that south end sewer that actually takes care of the 280A restrooms. We have to call a company out probably every month, month and a half, because somewhere in there, the lines have broken and it clogs up and we have to power clean it out.
Are these actual bids from contractors or do you guys have the maintenance staff to do these items? And then these are just material costs or?
That project is actual bid from contractors. I don't have the staff to cut out all the concrete and lay in the plumbing. I have one plumber or so.
Yeah.
So most of these are, if it's a big project, it's contracted. If it's a small maintenance items, it would be in-house. For instance, number two, that, that is supplies only. We will install the flush valves and so on. Number three would be a contracted out because it's a big air handler replacement.
Oh, that's what AHU stands for.
Air handler, yeah. HU is our air handler.
That was my question.
That, that air handler actually is, was put in in 65. It has a two-pike system, but there's two big coils in it. It has a leak between the two coils that we've tried to repair. We've had contractors out and in-house, we tried to repair it. It still leaking continuously. We built a temporary drip pan under it over to the drains just to keep the water off the floor. So it's going to have to be replaced here soon.
Those sidewalks, ADA sidewalks, are those new or are they going to be replaced?
Number 11?
Yes, sir.
What that is, is basically all the sidewalks in front of the 600 of the library. At this time, we do not have any 80 ramps that be the 900 or the 600 building without them having to go all the way around from the north end of 900, north end of 500 to get to the 600. Most of the ramps and steps in that area would be replaced in that because they're all from the 60s and in pretty bad shape. But that complete, that would cover all this, all the steps in that front entrance area, all the ramps and also on the west side of the 600 building.
The ramps are already in place.
No, we do not have any ramps in there except one ramp by the flagpole that's in pretty big shape, pretty bad shape, so.
So that'd be replaced, okay.
And the 700 building is at the?
Theater building, yes, fine arts theater building. Same thing with those sewer lines, sewer lines are from the 60s and we just had to cut them out and replace them. Any more questions on the top section? All right, how about the second section of three to five years? Anyone have any questions on those projects? Or items on the list?
The forklifts in Andover, was that on our, on our board agenda recently?
No, it was the one from El Dorado. We replaced it. This one in Andover is actually older than the one that we had here, but the one here was costing us a fortune to keep maintained. We'd spent about 20,000 the last six years on that one, so. Any other questions on that section or any others below? I might add the bottom section. Buildings needing the AV, HVAC replacement. Those after our deferred maintenance projects that we're finishing up next year and a half. Those four buildings will be the only buildings left that that have the old 1960s HVAC symptom systems in it that will need to be replaced at some time.
Are any of these replacements or just standard condition, whatever you want to say, are any of these problems, any of the probabilities where we have to modify?
These buildings at the list could be because they're on the old system. I mean, every building at some time I've had issues with, but our older ones are the worst because they're an old two-pike system, which means I can, I can have only heat or cooling. I can't have both at the same time. And in order to take the humidity out of the air, I have to be able to cool the air, heat it back up and cool it again. Well, I mean, our deferred projects that we're doing now with the heating air are some of those funds. But we didn't have nine million to spend on. None of the ones we're doing now are on this list, correct. They are all off. And also the bottom ones that have the total prices of several million, if we did, for instance, the 700, that bottom and a complete building replacement, if we did that project, it would take a couple of the ones off the list up above. So.
Would it also, Ireland, would then, like if you, if you, if you fix the 600 HVAC equipment room, would that 210,000 expense then reduce what the HVAC replacement down at the bottom would be?
Yes, it would. It would reduce it, yes.
I know this is probably a dumb question, but why are we building carports?
Carports is because our high deductible on our hail damage and stuff for our fleet. If we, if we build carports, two hailstorms would pay them off. So it's just our deductible. That, that's the reason that they're only on the list. We have about 50 cars that would be in that carport area that's sent out with academics, academics, faculty and so on.
Hailstorm that came through in 2015 damaged every vehicle we have except.
Cars, vans and minivans.
The diesel shop, is that just tearing the existing structure that's inside their structure now down?
That is tearing the structure down that's inside. Have you seen that, Sheldon?
Shelby, I'll go cheaper, just on our hands.
Well, we have a construction kit too.
Well.
Hands-on experience with that.
I don't either.
No, I haven't, I haven't been by looking.
What it is, is to take out the old metal building in which there is an old metal extension building in there that the new building in 1990 was built over the top of. Take that out and then build a wall from the floor to the ceiling that splits the two shops.
Yeah, it's true.
Yes.
Well, we don't, that's.
I wasn't here. I don't know.
None of us, well, Kent was here. Kent, it's your fault.
Kent didn't even know. He walked over the other day because he didn't believe me.
Yeah.
Not that he didn't believe me, he just couldn't believe it.
Is that even insured like that?
I'm, don't tell Ryan, but we're insured on it. I, to be honest, I didn't realize it till a while back. I had seen it in, in there, but it hadn't dawned on me it was two buildings, so. It does.
So how much is our deductible on the hailstorm for the vehicles?
100,000.
For storms?
$2,000 each.
Per vehicle?
We have a real budget on it, but that's five to 10 years down the road. We've talked about it, you know, all along, but it just, it hasn't, it's, I mean, when you look at all of this, it's just not a priority. I mean, it's not the most significant priority at this point in time.
This is shot in dark wild here. We have a building that's only housing or housing so many classes and so many students. At some point, so we're tearing it down, just dropping up another, a new structure there. By the time we're constantly upgrading, we're facing the HVAC and all sorts of things.
No, I believe probably some of the smaller buildings could be, but you know, still, for instance, like the 400 building, we're talking about 540,000 for the upgrade. That's a whole lot less than replacing that building.
Right.
But how many times does a storm come? All, all 50 vehicles or even half of those are at the same place.
Well, it happened the last time.
The residents of Augusta.
There was two cars.
They had two tornadoes in 30 years. You know?
Not very often.
Significant damage.
You say the, the, the cost savings, not to, not to kill this carport horse anymore that's way down the road. Is, is the savings on this, would that be achieved by the deductible that we pay if there was a claim? Or would that be saved by reduced premiums because we now have coverage over them? So they are less likely to get hurt.
Yeah, it's both.
Well, and I don't think carports are a fail-safe against all hail damage. My parents had the back ends of all of their vehicles beat to a pulp because they were parked in a carport. So runs look great, back not so much.
I was just wondering whether if the, I mean, if we're, if you're justifying that expense on, if there's a, if there's a claim, we save the deductible. That to me is different than saying, we know we're going to get some element of savings by virtue of the premium being us.
Right, and I'm just saying a carport isn't going to protect a vehicle 100%. It was in a three-sided.
Lane two.
Yeah, that's what this was. They had a three-sided shed and one side exposed and that was what got pummeled. Because the wind was blowing, so it blew the hail into the structure.
Have we sent anything up to maybe those two agencies? That was contracted through the KFC. See if we can get you premiums.
They're working on this, yes. Okay, we have a process where we submit application information and we have submitted all the information that they have requested so far.
Okay, so you've already got NHTC that you're working with.
Well, we work with ICI and Meredith, my assistant, starts on those renewal applications in January. It's a very, very tedious, long process and she has submitted all of those. They're in the process now of taking the application information and submitting it to the various carriers to get the, to premium and deductible quotations, which we will bring you next month.
Are we talking about the Kent State Board of Education and what?
Okay, they.
Those two agencies do.
There's a, the KROMAP program.
Yes.
Which we say associated with KASB. We, we were made aware of that program about six weeks ago. And at that time, we contacted the Conrady Agency, who is designated by the KROMAP program for this part of the state. And Meredith has been, Meredith and I met with Mr. Conrady and Meredith has submitted all the information that he has requested at this time. And he, we expect to get a quote back from him before the board meeting, but after the board book will be made. So right now, we're discussing how to go ahead and analyze those to bring you a recommendation at the board meeting. Yeah, there'll be a way to compare.
Kent, does the current budget proposals that we've been talking about include designated for the program maintenance? Or is that just something we talked about, there's surplus, we could use it for that, but you all have a proposal that we would set aside X amount to apply to?
We showed you at the last work session, April work session. No, that was the March meeting. At the April work session, I gave you a set of documents and we listed all the this, and I actually have copies of this if you want to look at it again. But it shows all the various designated reserves that we have, like the capital outlay fund, the capital project fund. So at this point in time, we have what we call a facilities fund, which is an ongoing for short-term maintenance item. More like replacing carpet, things like that, painting that's done annually. For longer-term types of projects like what Ireland has showed you on this list. We are, we would like you to consider that those would some of those funds be set aside for contingencies of this type of, of deferred maintenance that we're talking about tonight.
Okay, I understand that. I guess my question is, have we been, and I apologize if I missed it, have we been presented with, we would like you to set aside this much? And this is how we propose to spend it?
Not specifically.
And I'm not being critical, I'm just, I just want to make sure I did.
Well, what we've done is we've shown you the reserves that we have and we showed you this list of items that potentially could come out of the reserves.
It's not a trick question.
We, we, no, I understand, I understand. I understand what you're saying. We have not showed you, unless it say, we want to take this far down Ireland's list, out of this particular reserve fund at this time. We have not done that.
Well, I, I think it might be helpful to know what, there, there are some differences between what the and it's just, it's what Ireland's provided more detail now than we had before, but the list of the, of the top deferred maintenance or unfunded items that we had in March is a little different than what is on this list. And again, there's a lot more details of this one. So again, I'm not trying to be critical, but without knowing which one is.
That is correct.
X amount of money, how, how would you propose to spend it balancing between, because most of the, the list that we had before, most of the items that were on that prior list are in the three to five-year project.
That is correct.
Not what you're saying is the one, three-year critical, critical. Now, those are all put down as smaller, smaller ticket items too.
Correct.
This is basically everything that the fund extras that they would take care of.
No, that is correct, yes.
Kent, when we looked at your March numbers, you have the deferred maintenance fund and the estimates, the herd money that came in and the sale of the building. So we were at 6.1 million, a little more than that. You've had your expenditures, you've got 1.8 million, almost 1.9 left, but it doesn't indicate that we're really setting aside funds. If we hadn't gotten herd money or herf, herf money, would we have had deferred maintenance funds to speak of?
Probably not.
Yeah, I don't, like I said, that, so those those revenue streams aren't, they won't sustain. They're not going to come, keep coming. So we do have to take into consideration where will we get deferred maintenance funds in the future? I mean, we have some to work with now, but it'll be gone soon.
Even at the even at the university level, the support regions manages all of those university buildings and everything. And they continually ask, they have, in recent years have asked for additional deferred maintenance money from the state budget. I, you know, I can't even tell you how many hundreds of millions of dollars in deferred maintenance agencies have. They got some money this year to go towards deferred maintenance, but it's, it's just a, I mean, it's an issue that you know, everybody gets behind on the system because it just, there just is not enough money to set aside to address some of these big expenditures. So you're right, the herf, the herf funding, where lots of people address some of these longstanding products that nobody's been able to cool enough money. I mean, you could go out for bonds and those types of things to do it and then pay it off over time. But it has helped in a lot of areas with some of these projects that have been sitting there forever. I mean, you know, you, you approved the upgrades, the electrical infrastructure, you know. I mean, you know, you, you approved the upgrades, the electrical infrastructure, you know, that we just sort of found out by chance, which was $800,000 to $800,900, so. You know, we were able to use herf funds for that. Those kinds of things on our buildings that sometimes you just don't even know are going to happen, but you have to address them. It's so hard to keep track. Can't keep track. I'm sure you can, but anyway, I, I'd kind of like to see some kind of a spreadsheet that says, okay, remember that 2 million we got for the building in the end of Earth? This is where we're going to put it. Remember that 225,000 that we didn't give to Mr. Young because we didn't feel like there were lots on every single dorm room that's necessary? That's what it's going, is that fund right there? I guess just the 558,000 dollars we're going to get from the state. Do that. I'm just trying to keep track as, as the taxes I see raising, 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 I'm trying to keep track. The money that we're spending as well. So, and then just going back real quick to that insurance thing. We could get the declarations pages to compare for each of those policies so that we'll know what the differences is if there are any, or we'll be able to do that. No, if you don't have those.
I think those take a long time to produce too.
I would assume we would get that, we would get scope of coverage summaries in conjunction with.
After, yeah.
We have to something to compare. What was just We'll be able to take those line up side by side. You could go back to last June's board book and see the sheet that Ryan produced that showed, here's what last year's premiums were, here's what we expect this year's premiums, and here's what the difference is. He does that. He'll bring something like that to the June working because that's what he typically does. So.
Sure, what you're referring to that the declaration pages, but you know, there's, this policies have thousands of pages in them.
I'm just trying to figure out how we're going to compare.
Well, we'll give you the, the key items to compare, which would be the deductibles and the premiums. Pardon me?
The challenge?
Challenge course.
Anybody else have any questions on deferred maintenance?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ireland.
Uh, yeah, that's the next one. That's appears to be the next item on the list.
You know, and that was a crazy thing is, is back in 2008, 2009, 10, 11, when the budget, budgets were slashed, deferred maintenance went, maintenance went out the window.
Yeah, because they were trying to spread the dollars out to cover, you know, the operational.
Well, yeah, but I mean, still.
I would say, yeah, but still we pay 15 grand a year per student to educate them and they're not performing well.
Well, I mean, we're in a recession and I'm going to make a 35, 36,000 dollar investment in my house because of deferred maintenance. It just has to be done.
So, well, this sheet obviously is just fairly simple. We weren't quite sure where the discussion was headed on this. What I was told is, you know, that the board was interested in what would happen to our revenues if we had changes in enrollment. And so we just have created a fairly simple little list here, you know, if our based on the 18 million roughly of net revenues that we're projecting for next year. And we projected in the preliminary budget update that we gave in March, we predicted a zero change in enrollment. If the normal was to decrease by 2%, we would estimate the revenues that we showed you at that time would go down by 363,000 roughly. And we're just estimating linearly here, what those changes would, would amount to.
So 2% would be about 130 students, 6,500 students times 2%.
On headcount that.
On headcount, yeah.
Sounds good. Well, we're actually paid on credit hours. So from finance, we look more credit hours and what have around the, I'd have to look back for sure, but around 135,000 credit hours now.
When you have those credit hours in a, in a chart at some time, can you also list beside the full-time enrollment equivalent? So we can look at both credit hours and full-time.
An FTE, sure. Yeah, we just consider 30 hours to be FTE. So when we give you the credit hours, we, we can show what the FTE is. FTE and headcount, of course, obviously are different.
I thought 12 full-time hours equals a full-time student times 30 for the.
We, we consider 15 hours of semester as an FTE.
So that's, that's your number Shelby, that's about 4,500 FTE based on.
And we have, demographically now, we have a higher percentage of part-time students, right? These are than full-time. And, you know, part-time take fewer credit hours obviously, but yeah, we have more part-time students. Which is typical of community colleges. Most community colleges have a higher percentage of part-time students. And we also have seen a pretty significant shift in the split between men and women. Where are we at? 45% men, 40%? 60, 40. So 60% women and 40% men.
I just noticed that here, it caught my eye that there were more.
Yeah, men, you know, men. If you have access to higher pay jobs and, you know, better, or better jobs or something maybe than
Higher, higher ed, higher education culture for men over the last 15 years hasn't been super encouraging for them.
No, that's, that's nationally.
Right.
But scholarships, don't they go on 12 hours or 24 credit hours? For full-time.
Are you saying the financial aid?
Yes.
12 hours is full-time for federal financial aid, yes.
Thank you for your asking.
So I think we're, what, what I was thinking of with asking for this info is we've, I know there's, there's been talk about, well, should we be estimating? Is it appropriate to budget revenues based on a flat line from last year? Or should we be looking at something based on what we've seen in past years? This gives us some of the, some figures to quantify. If we estimated a 2% decrease from a budget standpoint, what does that mean to the bottom line? It looks like it means about 360,000 per, per 2%.
Now, does anybody think about our expenses at the same time except for from
That's always been the harder discussion because with so much of our, our expense load in, in the people faculty at least, our hands are, are relatively tied to how we can effectively save money on staff reductions. Just the way the master group is written.
Well, this looks like to me that if we lose enrollment, that we're going to have to figure out a way to make money of by raising, by raising tuition fees. Is that what this is meant to explain?
No, I, it was, it wasn't, I didn't mean it to explain anything except to be able to quantify. There was, there was some challenge, I think from Shelby last time, that why are we estimating a flat line? We haven't seen a flat line in Well, we've heard it from Shelby before, so. But so this was just meant to if we estimated a 2% decrease, what does that change?
A dollar amount.
Yeah, how does it quantify with that?
If we do have a decrease, I want to have a serious elasticity of demand to talk with you on Jeff, I'm saying, which is actually kind of taking it for inflation and we still didn't grow. It's essentially, oh, yeah, no, I mean, we'll have to see the data eight months from now to have that talk.
It might be that we've lost less than we would have lost if we, it's hard because you never know what, what would have happened. You think about.
We'll know internationally for sure, as much as we drop there, we get them.
And if the economy goes the way it's going so far, we may see more parents make the decision to not go four-year and go two-year.
We may be able to rent out our dorms based on people that don't have a house.
That's what we feel.
Why are parents going to go to college if they can get a job?
Well, they just don't, because I think some of those people that would ordinarily fill those jobs, they're not necessarily parents.
Don't, don't we tend to see an increase in enrollment when unemployment's high?
Up to COVID, it did.
Yeah, that's the problem.
What do you attribute that to? Is that just the, the uncertainty of, over what COVID meant and the different views of how much fear there was to be around other people?
I think that's a great part of it. The other part is what it meant to be employed. Sorry, a lot of people who's not doing their knowledge, we could see that, well, including employed, but they would be a lot of unpaid.
The philosophy of a change.
Well, you had a huge period of time where you were unemployed and you were still getting money.
Yeah.
This is more money than you were making when you were working.
Yes.
It's hard to pay someone $600 to work for me when they get $600 a home and the air conditioning.
I think the other thing is that people figured out that when they were home and the use of technology and all those kinds of things, they, I think a lot of people found a different balance in lifestyle between work and home and quality kinds of things. And they want that to continue.
And so, so you, but I mean, a few years ago, what we talked about, we saw an employment rate being 3%. And if it's that 3% and seeing the 3% to that, they're not the same. What it is, we still don't know. Write a paper.
Yeah, I think it's interesting that, you know, statistically we're, we're way overdue for a recession or way overdue for a lot of things, but I don't know how you quantify or there's never been a time in history when we printed money the way that we have. So there, there's just no statistical, historical analysis that's going to point you to what's going to happen now because it's never existed before. So you're
Farmers, one of the farmers associations came up to us by the end of summer. Hardly being in stores.
Wow. That's scary.
I think that's, we don't need to discuss that. That's Okay, yeah, that's, okay, that's good.
This is nice.
We don't want to be here four hours tonight.
Yeah.
Kelly's got marketing stuff for you.
All right, good.
So we set a meeting with a timeline and we're just cruising right.
If there's, if there's an easy one to drive on, that was a
The agenda now, yeah. Might be an idea.
That was just a slow pit.
Okay, marketing. So yes, um, are, are you ready?
Yep.
Yeah, there was some, you know, there was some question again on the budget proposal that we had, I think when we talked about in March, we had included in that budget proposal for you, two marketing positions plus some addition to her marketing operational budget. And so you wanted, yeah, you wanted Kelly to provide some additional explanation about that.
Yes. Sure, sure. I'm going to start with the positions first and then we'll talk about the big chunk of money that you see on the additional needs. So, um, we re, we started to rebuild the marketing department back in 2014 and that's when I came back to the institution. And so the two positions that you see in, on your books there, one is the content strategist writer position. When COVID hit you, the board was gracious enough to provide and approve a videographer position for the marketing department prior to COVID. COVID hit and that position was reduced. That did not however, reduce the need for the video and the photography. So luckily we had, our full-time writer was able and had previously done and still does photography. So he slid over to backfill that position. And what, we started out through COVID with him trying to do both full-time jobs and the writer position alone is not a job that one writer can do. So that wasn't going to work for very long and it didn't. And then I stepped in, I'm the only other really writer on staff. And so I've been trying to backfill that as well. So we got through the last two years, um, just piecemealing it really this last spring. Really the only reason we were able to get the fine arts releases, they're the big one, the fine arts, the theater stuff and all the student awards is because of the student worker. Lynn comes in and she has, luckily her schedule allows, she's the only student that we have hired as a student worker that with this type of flexibility in her work schedule, that she can come in three days a week and she, she pretty much works from nine till 4:30. And it's because of her, the releases have been, those releases were getting out. Now there are a lot of other stories and a lot of other content that we don't, that we haven't been able to touch. Um, and the community connections newsletter is a perfect example of that. So, um, so that's why this content strategist is, I see it as a backfill into that full-time writing position. This position alone, as I've said, I've never had, never in my career in higher ed have I seen a writer, one writer and be able to do every, to meet the need. So we will still be looking for student workers, probably still be leveraging freelancers on occasion. Just depends on where the vol, you know, when the volume hits during different parts of the year. We did something I did want to share with you. Last year, we have a marketing automation system and we want that thing pinging all the time. And we have done 90 different programs here and we want at least three emails ideally. Somebody sees an ad about fire science, they click in, it's going to pop them into a landing page, they see the form, they can either apply, which is, which is a longer process. Or they can just fill out this little form. It's like, yeah, I'm interested. Once they do that, they should at least get preferably three emails that will drip to them over a period of time. And we bid that out and it was over $100,000 for three different companies we went to, to do that kind of work for us. And the web content is also a, a need and to, when you go externally, it's anywhere from 900, our last bid was 900 to $1,400 for 500 to 750 words for a webpage. So this, it, it's expensive and it's less expensive if we can bring it in-house and do that type of work, work internally. The second position is a social media coordinator. In the marketing department, we have a digital media specialist and really over the course of time, that's turned into four full-time jobs, all on one desk. So that position does the marketing automation, digital ads, social media management and website. And the web is split between two in Bill Young's area. So we've got two over there and then I have a person on my side and they tag team on web. But with the need and with social media, it's really blossomed again. You know, social media hit the scene and everybody was hiring social media coordinators or people in their offices. And then I feel like there went through a period where people kind of stepped back from that. It's like, uh, maybe not so much. But really it's, it's flipped it back on its, on its head again and people But really, it's flipped it back on its on its head again, and people are hiring social media coordinators or somebody to help with social media. You know, as part of the, as part of the deal. And we were just looking at web analytics today and social media is one of the top, the paid, the paid ads and social media are the two among at least certainly the top five, and I want to say they're in the top two or three driving traffic to the website. So we thought, well, social media is also really content heavy and planning and everything. So we thought we would peel the social media away from the digital and kind of work them in more with the writing position. Granted, in in my team, the creatives, we all crisscross, we're all backing each other up however we need to. Not everybody's a writer, not everybody does phenomenal video, right? So we just back each other up, but that's how we're looking at those positions there. And also I would just share that when we have been able to do our best inside my department, we've had at least the four, but there's so much more that we need to do and can do, especially with the marketing automation system now that we have in place. And that's one of the biggest innovators that the marketing department has done probably within the last couple of years. When we implemented that, we were the only community college in Kansas that was moving into a marketing automated system at the time. I'm I'm not sure that that's the case now. That was a couple of years ago. But it is a beast because even to do $100,000 worth of three emails for every program, once those prospects get those three emails, you can't just flip them back into the, into the funnel and have them get the three emails again. You got to keep it fresh and keep changing it up. So all kinds of, all kinds of work that goes there. And I guess the other thing I wanted to add on the content strategy, I put this word strategist in there because there are so many different channels now. The same story needs served up five or six different ways. So there's the blog format, there's a website approach, there's the press release for the media, and then there are your your social media posts. And right now we're cheating social media. You'll, you're probably going to see the same post hit all of our platforms, which is about seven of them, I think. And we have six channels that we manage directly. The college has another 41 official channels throughout the institution. And marketing doesn't directly manage those, but we want to be a partner with them and help them in in cases, we're we're an admin on every one of them. So if they're at conferences and like Kelly help, we can dive in and help on the backend if needed, but Mary, did you have?
Um, sports. Do you do the sports?
We do not do the sports. Tyler Nordman, yep, Tyler Nordman and and TC down there have their staff for sports. We we did way, way back in the day, but hallelujah for Matt Jacobs going down there at one point in his life to be sports information director. And so those are the positions. And I guess before I go into the, did you have any, any questions on positions before I go to the budget stuff?
I'm really looking, I'm looking at this board that I got for finance, and I just want to clarify how many people that you actually have in department 730, whichever media is marketing. Okay, see, visual graphics designer, right? One, just one.
Yeah, we have, well, if I have myself and then my assistant director.
You're not listed there. You're listed as part of the foundation. She's director of college relations and marketing. She reports to Tom. She reports to Tom, but she's the director.
Yeah, okay, yeah. In in college relations and marketing, you have myself as director, you have an assistant director. We have Rodney has slid over.
Director, it's Kelly Cruz.
Yeah. Yep, Kelly Cruz. And then we have Rodney Dimmick, who was hired as a communication specialist. Yep, but he's the one you've seen with the photography with the camera in his hand. So he has slid over and done video.
So do you still have your graphics designer? You said yes.
The graphics designer is assistant director Kelly Cruz.
Okay, and because she's not listed as staff, something that may have been listed.
Okay, that, yeah, now Noah is separate. That's a motion graphics person, yes. And he, we just got Noah and he helps Rodney. So we now have the duo set for video production, which is, which was greatly needed.
Okay, and James?
James just vaca, he not just, he left in October and we just replaced that position with Sarah. And it's that desk, we would peel the social media coordinator off of and have them do a deeper dive. We feel like we're a, we're a mile wide in a lot of things, but we're only about an inch deep. And so we're looking at improving our effectiveness there.
Andrew Jackson.
Andy Jakes was slid over, right? Yep, no, that's fine. Andy Jakes came over at COVID and they slid him over to marketing from IS and he has resigned. And that position isn't open as of yet.
Okay, I guess I was going to see the under department 735, which is the foundation.
Yeah, yeah.
So how is that good?
Tom is my boss and so I just, my team sits inside the foundation, but we're not part of the foundation financial structure or anything.
But you get paid by the college.
I get, yes, we all get paid by the college. It's just reporting structure.
No, I know the foundation is, and I understand. I just looked at about six of them.
Okay.
After I got across, I got quit, but I did have a question, and that is how much money is transferred from the college to the foundation? Like maybe the last two or three.
Harry, you take a note of that? Thank you.
Kelly, Eldorado Main Street is trying to hire a Vista volunteer. Do you know much about that?
Just a wee bit that I learned today at a, at a meeting I was at downtown with them.
And I think it's a wonderful idea. Maybe we should look into it because they're paid by the Vista volunteers. It's $30,000 and for mass media, social media, whatever.
What is it?
It's a volunteer.
Yeah, a Vista volunteer, what she was sharing today was, and I'm not sure how many hours a week they are, but they're a volunteer, they get a stipend of 15,000. So maybe she's got two positions or something like that because she said it was 15 today.
Okay.
And the, and you're getting people usually in a transition period that it's like, okay, I can, I can take that on and while I'm looking for my full time.
A number of smaller nonprofits utilize Vista quite a bit to help with their ongoing operation. And then, so you said, you know, just kind of transition, that they're looking for people, but they can't afford to pay them. So that really fits the mold for at least for a little while.
Right, right. I was playing with them back in school a few years ago. We had some Vista volunteers that were paid to come into the school and read with the kids and they did a nice job. But I never saw them after they quit.
Yeah, my only experience is, yeah, they could, they come in and they're, they're there for a bit and then they're.
Yeah.
Don't they, aren't they somehow, they offer maybe student on debt at some point with some of those volunteers?
I think they can.
They can do that somehow. I think it's a great program.
Yeah, it's been around a long time.
Have we invested in that?
I have not. I have not. I'm looking for marketing experienced inconsistency. Yeah, yeah.
Let me ask you something. I got you on the COVID there and I'm not trying to put you on my seat. What are your points for something? I think.
Yes. The website is going to get.
I have an unforgivable background.
Yeah, that's, that's all right. I'm glad you asked. So the website is getting ready to, well, I want to say explode. That's the first word, but actually it won't as we morph it. So we have engaged in a new backend and with another company. So we're migrating into a more Drupal, a Drupal system with, with another company and it'll give us so much more. It'll give us so much more flexibility. But the way it's going to work, you won't just, we won't just turn on the new site at midnight like we've done in the old days. We'll just come out with the first couple of layers and it'll be a morphed experience. But we're going to be migrating over into a much, a much better system.
Do you have any comment? Do you have any presentation on the content board on what it's going to look like when it gets finished and like a timeline is?
We are actually working on that right now. So we just had a meeting, we meet every Monday afternoon and we're trying to finalize the templates for the first three layers. And but I, I do have a little bit of information I could share and we were hoping, and I don't think it's going to happen in June, but hopefully over the summer, by the end of summer, early fall, you're going to start seeing this, this new presence start to appear.
Now, you have control of that. Who manages that? Does the foundation manage it or does the college manage it? Frankly, I'd like for the college to manage it.
The college does manage it and the bulk of the team, oh, yeah, oh, yes, because I have your mic.
We can hear you anyway.
I know, but it's for the millions watching online.
Oh, I see.
So it's, it's completely managed by the college. So we've got a team, I, IT partners with marketing. So IT handles the system side of it. And so we're about 80% system, about 20% content, marketing is all content. And then we, the individual departments also are responsible for pieces of content that have to do with their departments. It was very difficult and cumbersome under Jadoo, the CMS backend system that we were using up until this point. So we've moved to an aqua CMS that's built on Drupal, which is a lot easier to manage. It's a lot easier to manage. It's a lot easier to input in and we'll be able to have our staff and, you know, within each department have better control and management over their pages. With that being said, it goes through an approval process that we make sure branding's on colors and, you know, the accessibility, all that stuff meets the standards that are necessary. The Kelly's department does, historically does a great job with with the content side of it and the design. Where we're at today, though, we used to have a full web, web department. So I've got two guys that handle the system administration. And again, some content where in the past, the 10 years ago, when we switched to Jadoo, it was kind of a flip the switch at midnight deal. But it's because we had a whole department that was employed at that time to build that out and get that going upfront. We don't have the capacity today. So today, to Kelly's point, we're going to activate a few layers at a time. And then those other, the rest of the content will be migrated as we go.
And that's, that's fine. I know this, I know these timelines are very intense when it comes to implementation. I get that. You know, I know that probably better than most people. But bottom line is, what's going to be first? What's that first template look like? Is that going to be student services, administration and so on and so? What are those?
Actually.
Three groups that are going to be out there in front? Are they going to be three of the best programs we have, like nursing?
Actually, you've hit on pretty much spot on on what we've been talking about. So we're going to take both angles. We're going to look at the home, obviously the homepage. And then we want to make sure that the uniqueness of being a student at Butler is highlighted. So the resident life, student life portion will be, will be addressed right off the bat along with probably the first four or five programs. And we're going in and and looking at the analytics to see. So nursing, construction right now is beating nursing. So construction is going to be a top one. We know pretty much Mel's area, construction, diesel, culinary, the Redler Institute. And then we're just going to start developing a, a system for phasing in the first level and then going into the second level. And it'll be based on analytics, visitations, you know, to the pages and that sort of thing.
I can, I can really see the focus on, I'm very efficient. I, I understand what you're saying. I'm still looking for that timeline. I, I just don't think we have time. Not that we're dawdling, but I don't think we have much time. We've got to get out there and be competitive if we're going to raise the enrollment rate. I don't want them to sink any further than they already have.
Right.
We're going to have to start really doing some serious cutting. Frankly, I don't want to be on the board that has to make those kind of decisions.
Yeah, I totally get that.
I don't want to do that. So I'm just asking, what is your overall implementation plan? When does it begin? When does it end? And what are the phases? And what are those each phases? Everybody has phases. It always meet, if you've ever used projects on.
Yes.
You know that not all those tasks light up at the same time and they not always be completed at the same time. Just like any other construction, minus the brick.
Now that we have, actually, I was just telling Sarah, Julie, that pretty, pretty much out this afternoon. She went to just her second meeting today. This is her second week. She started with this on graduation. And I told her this afternoon, I want her and Kelly and I, the assistant director, and we need to sit down and develop a timeline for that. So we would start to see, we would hope, we would start to see new fresh images by the end of the summer, early fall. And then to your point, map that out to where we can say, all right, and we're flipping this and flipping that and timing it out. But we haven't, we don't have that plan built yet.
Well, I think, I think this in part speaks to the capacity issues that marketing has had. They have not, they have not had personnel and positions filled. And, you know, so this speaks to the need for positions that you're requesting.
Yeah, it took us.
And kids today don't watch TV and they don't, you know, social media is like, it has to be the
and there's.
one because kids, they're on the phones.
Yeah.
They get everything on their phones and they don't watch like we used to.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Yeah.
So many other channels out there that we need to explore besides just your top main six.
And just one more before we move off the positions, just so that the board is aware. The foundation does do some work for the, for marketing, which is not charged to market the college all, which is help with accounts payable. What, what Kelly's had to do in the past is try to move money within her budget to try to meet the needs of whatever is a need that comes up that particular year. So she's shoveling things around at all times. So we have a person at the foundation who helps her do that. So if she's looking at, I need more money and let's say.
Bookwork and account payable.
And so we have a staff member on the foundation side who helps her with that as part of her tasks. But the college does not incur any cost for that.
That's true.
So that, so technically you've got another position kind of happening, but I mean, the foundation is willing to do that, yeah.
No, I was thinking that's, that's the fault. To get the first implementation phase in.
Well, I mean, I know we all would have loved to have seen it.
But if you just take a note from Bill, you just find somebody that can actually do the job. I need this, this nut and I'll have this all done.
Well, that's, that would be lovely, Bill.
Do we have anybody that can come in and at least get the website?
We have actually, we have hired, we haven't started with them. We're going to start this next week, I believe, but they're going to help us with content and help us look at the mapping of the critical pages, SEO, keyword search and.
The new system.
In the new system and teach us how to do it and do, and do a section for us. And then I'm hoping maybe there's, turn around and have him do some more. But also my team will get educated through the work on what he's doing and learn from him so that we can also do better internally.
I guess I'm curious. System now is still, you know, getting it a little bit more up today. I guess I'm curious. Let me ask a couple of questions. I'm curious as to what is, you know, what specifically are your concerns about the website and what's out of date? Because I, I mean, I don't know. So give me some examples. Site and make examples. I don't want to put bigger. You've already said you're getting a brand new one.
And it's going to be completely, it's going to look completely different once.
And I'm glad to hear it.
Yeah, it's going to leaner, our, yeah, our mantra is leaner, meaner and cleaner. And we're looking at all the internal systems for that content because right now our, our current website has thousands of PDFs attached to it and that is ADA. No, 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 no. So now with SharePoint and all of those, we're going through and looking at every page and categorizing it to determine, does it stay on the page? Does it die? Does it go to SharePoint? We're trying to figure out how to handle every bit of content. So we've just finished that work and now we're getting ready to dive into the actual design and the content.
And I think it's important to understand too, Julie, that the, you know, getting to it quicker rather than later, that comes with a price tag. And so there are, there are entities out there that will do it. And, and so we, we look at the cost of shipping it out versus trying to find somebody in house to do it. The cost is like this. And so we're kind of trying to balance that the best we can. But that is certainly a determinative when we're looking at when to put stuff out there for bid and to take it out versus doing it in house.
Is there any other colleges that you're looking around and you're looking at the examples on their website that you're liking and saying, hey, I
Yep.
Timbuktu, I like this, this, that, and over here, I like something different. And I'm not trying to take your time. I know you're trying to do a phenomenal job. My problem is, I look at that and.
Yep, it's, it feels.
Too much of a background in IT, probably not in a current IT background. Bottom line is, it's, it's difficult. It's cumbersome. You're right. It needs to be redone. And I don't even think I start with that. I think I do what you're doing. I think I'd start over and try to remodel it and update it.
Yeah, it's, we are starting over and we had to catalog, catalog all the content first and then figure out, because we are going to have to have some difficult conversations with areas. because there's content that we're going to want to kill.
Kelly, I want to go back to your help that you're requesting. Do you have, can they just be high school graduates?
The high school graduates, the student workers, the freelancers are great to come in and help supplement, but I need the expertise to guide them.
So do they need a college degree?
No, a high school graduate with the, with the gumption and the go to come in and help us.
Can Eldorado help them?
We've had high school-
I don't.
Like recent seniors who were coming to Butler. I've had that before where they come in, but they were working with my full-time writer. And then last year, we had, so I referenced the hundred thousand dollar bid to do the emails, three emails per program. Obviously, we said, okay, that's not going to work. We had a K-State intern come in and work for us over the summer. She hammered through all of it. We've got now three email drafts done in the system for every program. But I need now the expertise to go in. And it was a student, right? So to go in, clean it up.
Yeah.
Really refine the, the psychologies when you're trying to get someone to, to do the next step.
That's a challenge, Mary Martha.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because getting the level of expertise you need to maintain and grow is what you want using that type of help. It's very short term and it's janky.
Yeah, they're in and out. So my little Lynn that, oh, oh, she graduated and this is her last week. So I'm-
She's a machine.
Oh, she is a machine. So to talk about the big chunk of money you also see in the budget as a request for marketing, three hundred and sixty-five, sixty-seven thousand dollars, something like that. What I, what I did is I just went back and looked through Strategic Enrollment Management Team and the different requests and then the coverage and the frequency needed on the different marketing channels and put it all together. So that is a lump sum that could basically demonstrate the gap in the support for marketing, everything we're being asked to do and all the functions and everything. So that's, that's the whole enchilada. And I have that, I do have those monies prioritized. And I can tell you if a portion was, if a portion was approved, but it's not the whole amount, the first thing on the list is digital advertising.
And I think it's-
It's all going to be digital.
I wanted Kelly to show you kind of what it takes to do what we need to do in order to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish, which is more students. And so what our, the practice had been before was that she would take what she was given and try to make hay out of that. And we were coming up short quite a bit because the man was so great. But I think you were in the red probably several times when we found money to try to, to, to fill that up. But she was never thinking, okay, what do I need to do versus what I do, what do I do with what I have? So I wanted her to kind of take it up here, tell us what that is, and then can we fund that? And if we can't fund that, then what are we willing to go ahead and not do? And collectively, we'll be okay with that. So that's the process that I asked her to, to walk through.
How does this relate to that company we were hiring? I think we approved it where we give them the names and they follow up.
That is Motomatic. She's probably referencing Motomatics.
And that's a totally different thing.
Yeah.
But I mean, we give them, it's, it's marketing, but not-
That's in student service, that's over in student services area. But what we would do, like-
Jessica's. Motomatic is actually to go back to students that either, like the, the most recent one we did financially, they filled out their F A S O, but they didn't come, or they're stopouts. And so actually going back to students who have, who have taken a-
They're like stopouts.
They're, they've taken more steps than what Kelly's doing. Kelly's trying to attract students to come to us for the first time and look at the website and be interested in even applying or digging into the programs. The Motomatic is focused on students that have already, that have already made that step into Butler somehow. And so it's a little bit different kind of thing.
It is, yeah, we work really closely with Jessica's Student Services on the stopout. You clear it out through the funnel. But the Motomatics thing is different. But what we, what we would like to do is if we had the social media coordinator is to study what Motomatics is doing in their approach and their psychology on their posts. Because they're telling us what worked and what different, you know, what didn't. And then we could take that back as our own strategy and, and learn from that experience and hopefully enrich other, other social media posts and engagement that we're trying to do.
Kelly, is there a website that, that the board can visit that Minix, what you're looking for in somewhat sweeping data, some college? Hey, this is kind of it.
Yeah.
Kelly's looking for-
Yeah, I can, I can have Dr. Colson that out to everybody. We've got, we've got-
That, that'd be great.
Okay.
So we can get an idea of what you're, before we vote on the budget like that. I mean, I know two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Capital money.
Well, the capital money has to be spent on capital projects that wouldn't give you-
Right, that's already dedicated. It's a part of the bond, it's a part of the capital improvement.
It has to be applied to capital projects.
It could be used for deferred maintenance.
Kelly's marketing stuff is not part of that original capital outlay project list.
So let's see, what else? Yeah, I do have those, I, I have it prioritized. And the other thing I would just point out is that the staffing at the institution, so I did do some research and went out to look. And Newman, of course, small private, they have five full-time, Friends has seven, W S U Tech has seven. Of course, Johnson County has more than twenty. I quit counting, quite honestly. After I hit twenty, I quit counting. But yeah, that, just the technologies and marketing is just constantly changing. And you can't just write a press release and pop it in an outlook and send it to the paper. It's not about the trifecta, radio, TV, and print. It's, it's about these multiple digital platforms that require more time and energy and analytics. And we do, we know we need to increase our, our awareness and our brand recognition in multiple ways, so.
And how does our tuition compare to Friends and all of those is the problem.
Yeah, we're a lot less than those.
Exactly.
One of the things that Kelly and I talked about when we were talking about positions and budget was the, you know, people, internal people creates additional capacity to get things done and to be able to address those workflows and efficiencies that are needed. And, you know, some of that, some of that the past couple of years has been outsourced.
I'm glad you brought that up, yeah, yeah. So when-
Some of that could be brought back in if you have, if you have more staff.
Right, so we have been outsourcing our digital advertising since October. They've been doing a great job and it's a great partner, but there's more flexibility to be gained when you have it inside. And I just get out of a meeting and I can just tell somebody, hey, you know, flip this and shut off that one. And you get, you would have, we would have greater value for every dollar because there's no commission, there's no extra management fees. The, the full buck would go to the ad platform.
And I think it's important to know that, so as you heard, Kelly's been going down in the weeds doing some of the tasks that staff should be doing. And Kelly has thirty-some years of knowledge. And so I've asked her to get back into the strategic mode so she can begin looking at how these things move and change and be able to advise the college on how to move. And so this, these changes, especially with the position, allows her to elevate herself a little bit, to spend more time doing that, allowing the staff to do the weed stuff, which is great because she gets paid, not enough, but she gets paid at a level where she should be looking at this at a higher level than, than she has the time.
Been writing cut lines.
And writing cut lines, yeah.
Do you know specifically who you're seeking out? Your desperate, you're looking for?
Target, student, you mean student enrollment wise?
Yeah.
Yes, but again, with all the digital platforms, it's, it slices up multiple, multiple ways. So we really have to look at the product because construction and diesel are not going to be obviously the same for a culinary student. So besides fall, spring, summer, and short-term classes, so we market those, we have locations, we try to market. And then we also have every program we try to market that dives down into those demographics and psychology.
I know you need a staff and I know they need to be a certain level, but in the interim, is there any way we could, you can contract with an upper-level person that can monitor all of these social media sites? A publicist per se, like a book person would hire or an athlete would hire somebody to keep track of all the social awareness areas that you need to publicize.
We've-
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. We outsourced, like the digital advertising, when we spoke with the outside person to help us with that because we were losing the one person that did all of those four things. What we ran into is that internal knowledge on social media. They did not feel comfortable managing it for us. You about have to have the in, the inside scoop. We get, we're also managing in the comments and the messages that come to us at all times of the day. And you have to kind of just, you have to really know the institution.
The comments on the website?
Yeah, no, through social media. People are talking to us and asking us questions and sometimes it's a public comment.
Obviously, the bot's not working, or is it bot, whatever that thing is possible, every time I get on it.
Well, it's just funny, it, it just depends on where people are at. When they're on Facebook, then they're, they're messaging us, you know, and their TikTok or, you know, these different platforms. But you have to have an internal knowledge because they'll, even my staff have to go in and we have to look up, all right, what's the best person to get them to? And we're not the only ones, there are other people here at the institution that help us. I know Heather's in the backend, she's answered those comments before, and admissions is in there and financial aid is in there, but-
You need to sound real on those, on those platforms. If you don't sound real, people begin to kind of pull out. So you have to, you have to really be engaged. And that's a tough one for a, a third-party vendor to do. They're very good at strategy on how to do things, but to do what you're asking them to do, it's, it's hard.
Is it realistic to just, I mean, I don't know, I guess, from where I stand, my daughter being at K-State, I would never expect to get a logical answer about the college from their Facebook page. I, I would think all of our social media should point people to a robust, capable website where you can email the department you have a question for, you know?
And that's pretty much what we're doing. We're sending them either to a person, depending on the question, or yeah, we're copying in the URLs and we're copying in the emails and say, please reach out and email. So yeah, driving it all through the website if we can. Yeah, some, some questions are unique and it doesn't work, doesn't work as best, but-
My brother wanted to know if I was employed by Butler Community College. I said, why? And he said, you forward everything that comes out on Facebook. I said, my gosh.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I do it all the time.
Do you?
Oh, yeah.
Uh huh.
I forward it all out.
I've been trying to forward to-
Mary Martha should be able to.
No, I know how to do it.
Been hearing the buzzword a lot of differentiators.
Yeah.
We do need to be, there's too many, too few students and too many community colleges for your version. He's going to have the same pool, I guess, to win the right students.
Yeah, the population is shrinking, they're tougher to get, they don't want marketed to. So you have to really pay attention to how you speak to them or you turn them off. You can't talk to them like you did five, six, seven, you know, they're changing all the time, but yet it's the competition spheres.
Can we follow some example? It's kind of neat to do it on a roll people online, that way.
The thing that just-
Far, actually.
The thing that jumped to my mind, as you said, that was Summer Plus was the best comparable example where if they enroll in six credit hours in summer, they get three free in the fall. And our summer, I, I've got my email tagged into that form and they're coming in all the, the time. And I do think Summer Plus, this is really taking off, to the point I would like to say, well, enroll in six in fall and get three free in the spring. Let's just keep it going.
There, you know, there are a lot of, we were kind of talking about it earlier today. We have implemented a lot of different kinds of things, innovative kinds of things. But for you folks, because the competition is so tough, we don't always want our competitors to know all the details of things that we're doing, you know, and the, the data that we're looking at and the information that we have because that helps again, kind of protect some of that, some of that information. But we've, I mean, I mean, the marketing analytics, all that sort of stuff is different than what we've done.
And the, like I, I've mentioned before, the, the new website that's coming is going to be a differentiator for us. And the marketing automation system has been a differentiator for us.
So if you had to predict, would you say that that will be totally online December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two?
I do not, I would love to be able to tell you that it would be. But I just, I, it's just too premature. I don't want to tie anybody's feet to until we have better plans for you.
Should be on the company software.
There is nothing free. Especially in education, they charge, charge, charge.
Yes, they've got-
They've got that, that's part of what they're helping the students develop, that timeline and the implementation. There's, there's no need-
He's got one, yeah, the backend in Bill's area, the two web services guys that manage the backend, they have yet another training session to go through, one more training with Aquia. And then I think they're all cut up, caught up there. And then we're going to start down and figure out the, the timeline for everything.
Plus, plus trickle-down training.
Right, right, we've got to train, train trainers. But they will, the ability to change content throughout the institution, we can lock down content so they can't mess it up and they can only change certain areas. So it does open up the ability to get a faster response time. Right now, everything has to go through Brian and Kyle if anybody changes an extension or, or changes a name. All of that because of the current system.
Because they only have permissions to change.
It's based on the, the CMS Jadoo, and that's why we're stepping away from it and moving to a different one, which is really a truly grassroots, start-from-scratch build for them.
Just another two cents out of me is, we have Adobe, Adobe Creative Campus, free laptops, tuition frees, we don't see a bump, we need to reevaluate who's looking at community colleges right now. But we're not going to find a better deal right now, but that's one of our-
Yeah.
Motivated.
Well, I'm hoping we've, we've got some momentum going, we're just holding our breath.
Those kinds of things that the four points that he just made, some I'd like to see on the website, something up at that spring.
Yep.
I don't care about some of the other stuff.
Okay, okay. No, I totally get it, I totally get it. And we're going to be able to have a slider, just be able to put some, some more of that hot stuff and rotate it through.
It'd be so nice if a kid could click on a program and the picture of the dean or a picture of the chief instructor could come up and say, hi, I'm so-and-so and I teach blah, blah. My classroom, I can't wait to see, I've already got sixteen students, blah, blah, blah. Call me anytime, I mean, whatever they want to say, thirty seconds, fifty even.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a personalized video. It's on the list.
Just too late, but I just don't want to, I don't want to do this too late. And I don't know. Shelby's right, we have a lot of competition right now. So what sets us apart? That's what we got to figure out, what sets Butler apart.
We've already done some stuff that sets us apart. I mean, we've been, we've been, you guys have been good about supporting a number of those initiatives that we brought forward to set us apart to help.
But I'm thinking of, what sets us apart for the student that is knocking on doors of colleges and saying, who do I want to go to? Which college?
Right.
Which community college do I want to choose?
Right.
What sets us apart?
For the marketing piece.
Yep, part of the marketing need.
Any other questions for Kelly?
Hey, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you. Want to know how that is going.
This was all the items that we had planned to talk about. We have another work session scheduled for next Monday with the regular, remember, this was supposed to be two weeks ago in courtesy of Kansas weather, we pushed, so. Well, that, that's my question, what do we feel like we need to discuss more about?
We could probably just send a few emails right now if we have follow-up questions. And I don't feel I need to come another night.
If you've got questions and you want some information, you know, ready for the June board meetings, send them. Okay, send them, send them to me and we'll- Bill is going to get me two years' worth of whatever RIMIC computer systems as an acknowledgement of our cereals that we're dumping off to them anyways.
The two years' worth of certificates, the validation, is that what you wanted?
Two years' worth of business where we dump surplus and they pay us X amount of dollars for X amount of cereals. And then as soon as your assistant is well, you'll be sending me that gigantic grant slash. It's a one-page.
Let's go. I was going to say, most of their bills.
You're scaring me now. I'm interested in anything we pay monthly on. We don't pay taxes. And I already know that we have. You originally asked in your email about the leases. Yeah, leases. Leases, yeah, any, anything of that.
We have Soraya Wilson report, but we missed all that stuff every month, expenditures.
Yeah. But we don't have.
I did, I did have a question on Eldorado, there was like charge per hour for Eldorado, like thirty grand last month for six hundred hours. I don't know if we released a space there.
Not in Eldorado, not in Eldorado.
Eldorado gives a classroom.
He doesn't report with you.
I just had a question.
It's Sarah.
Sarah, sorry.
I guess I don't remember what that was.
Yeah, I was just curious, it was like six hundred and three hours in Eldorado, yeah. USD four ninety Eldorado, twenty-one, twenty-two usage, so I guess a year, six hundred and three hours for thirty-three grand. I just didn't know. So general administrative services, Department 720. I don't know, I was just curious about it.
We could find out.
Yeah, yeah. There's a fire science building lease, which I assume that's just part of.
That's the, yeah, the fire science building. Would you say thirty-three hundred hours?
No, six hundred and three hours. It was.